Programming on WCS TV is brought to you in part by donation from Robert Oliver Bratcher of the Stanley and Bratcher Law Firm located at 100 West Main Street in McMinnville, Tennessee.
Programming on WCS TV, Channel 180, is made possible in part through donations from your McMinnville State Farm agents Lee Holland, Norm Barnes, Neil Helton, and Bill Sackman.
Now in session, Clerk Welles presiding. Folks, if you have cell phones, please turn them off and turn on vibrator. Please remain standing for our word of prayer, also our pledge. Also, folks, please keep on noise and move to the minimum.
We are very lucky tonight to have with us the leader of the prayer of Brother Ben Bane. He is the minister at Central Church of Christ. Brother Ben, if you can come to the microphone, please.
Let's pray again. Father in heaven, we're thankful for this day of life and for every blessing that you give us. Tonight, we honor you and recognize you as the true and living God. And, Father, we pray that the meeting here that is held tonight will glorify and honor you, and we pray that the government and the business of this county will put you and your word and your guidelines first. Father, we're thankful for our county executive, for every commissioner. Father, we pray that wisdom, good judgment, and what's best for the people of this county will prevail. Father, most of all, we're thankful for Jesus, for the hope of heaven. We love you and thank you for first love in us. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
So, look, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm clerk with the call group.
Here.
Here.
Carl D. Boland.
Here.
Carl E. Boland.
Here.
Kenny Boyd.
Here.
Charlie Brown.
Here.
Wayne Colton.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Earl Jones.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Ken Martin.
Here.
Michael Martin.
Here.
Carolyn Miller.
Here.
Charles Morgan.
Here.
Gary Prager.
Here.
David Ray.
Here.
Kenny Roberts.
Here.
Scott Ridley.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Diane Starkey.
Here.
Lane Wiltshire.
Here.
Melissa Yancey.
Here.
Thank you. The chairman entertaining the motion is President Dawkins.
Thank you, boss.
The motion is for Commissioner Bond, Scott, or Commissioner Prager. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the docket to remove item number one from the resolution, item number one, which is the first item for tonight. I would like to withdraw that for right now, if we could.
Do you have a motion? And second, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Randy England. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay, we won't put that as a number reading, we'll just amend the docket. So, as such, anybody else want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the docket to include tonight a resolution number 31-2015, which is a copy in front of all of the commissioners.
You put that in form of motion?
I do, sir.
Second.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Gary Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Okay. I'm sure all of you received your minutes as mailed. Are there any additions or any corrections?
No.
Only the second. With that done, is there a motion to approve the minutes as mailed and dispensable reading of the minutes? Motion by Commissioner Carl D. Boland. Second by Billy Earl Jones. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Where are you going to put that resolution number 31?
I'm sorry. 38.
Thank you.
That's okay with you, Tony. We will now go to elected officials, Department of Public and Public Service. Ms. Linda Hills, final.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There should have been a copy of my report in your packet. In addition, there was a letter on your desk which was received from the Comptroller of the Treasury's office. It was the approval letter for the fiscal year 2015 six-term budget. And as required, Comptroller's office will presenting to the county commission, and the letter must be included within the minutes of the meeting. So, if you have any questions, I'll be delighted to answer it at this time.
Motion to approve. Let me sit down next to him. Motion by Commissioner Bell. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roberts. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the call from Ms. Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, the commission, you should have a copy of my report, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Motion to approve. By Commissioner Lee. Second. Second by Commissioner Scott Ridley. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the call from Ms. Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, the commission, you should have a copy of my report, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Motion to approve. By Commissioner Lee. Second. Second by Commissioner Roberts. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the call from Ms. Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, the commission, you should have a copy of my report, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Motion to approve. By Commissioner Lee. Second. Second by Commissioner Scott Ridley. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you. Motion passes. Next is Airport, Richard Crawford.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Everyone should have a copy of my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Yancey. Second. Second by Commissioner Scott Ridley. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you. Motion passes. Next is Airport, Richard Crawford.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Everyone should have a copy of my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Yancey. Second. Second by Commissioner Carl D. Boland. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Codes and environmental, we do not have a codes officer. Hopefully, we will have one after tonight. So, we will move on to EMA, Mr. Jim Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, if you have any questions, if I might afford to tell that I've answered them.
Motion to approve. Motion by Kenny Brooks. Commissioner Boyd, second. Second by Commissioner Scotty. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Kenny. EMS, Mr. Brian Jennings.
Mr. Chairman, you have to answer your questions you have at this time.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Boyd. Second. Second by Commissioner Ken Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Kenny. The Industrial Board, Development Board, Mr. Alexander, he called this afternoon, and his mother had taken sick in Loxburg, and he was headed home this afternoon. So, if anybody's got, you got his report, if you got any questions, I'd be glad to take it down, get you an answer, and call. Motion to approve. By Commissioner Lee.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ridley. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Committee reports, Budget Finance, Commissioner Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Budget Finance has nothing to report.
Buildings and grounds, Carl D. Boland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, Buildings and Grounds has nothing to report.
Thank you. Economic and Development, and Agriculture, Ron, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have nothing to report.
Thank you. Education, Commissioner Starkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Education has nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Financial Management, Ms. Linda Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Financial Management met last Thursday, approved several bids. We'll have another bid scheduled in the near future. Other than that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Health and welfare, Commissioner Michael Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Highway and Bridge, Commissioner Prager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy and Personnel, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy and Personnel has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Safety, Commissioner Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. County Corrections, we're moving into our special committee reports, and our first is County Corrections Partnership, Commissioner Morris Bond.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, we have nothing to report.
Thank you. Be districting committee, Commissioner Michael Martin.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. We will go into our new business, item one, we have already withdrawn. We will go to item two, Commissioner Prager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the resolution to designate the Highway Department building located at 1520 Oak Smithville Road in Warren County, Tennessee, the Harold G. Glenn County Highway Building. Whereas Harold G. Glenn served four terms as Warren County Superintendent of Roads from September 1st, 1994, through August 31st, 2010. And whereas during the tenure of Road Superintendent, Harold Glenn was estranger and proposed an amendment of Chapter 61 of the Warren County Private Act of 1959 related to the office of the Warren County Superintendent of Roads. And whereas, that proposal resulted in passage of Private Chapter Number 107, House Bill Number 2047, Private Act of 1998, removing the stipulation of housing the office of the Warren County Superintendent of Roads in the courthouse. And whereas, in an effort to facilitate the move and said the office from the courthouse, Harold Glenn supervised construction of a 40-by-40 addition to the original Highway Department. Wirehousing building located on 1520 Oak Smithville Highway had cost $50,000, with the majority of the construction work performed in-house by the Highway Department employees. And now, therefore, it be resolved by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on this 21st, excuse me, of September 2015, and that number Warren County, Tennessee, as follows. Section 1, that the Highway Department building located on 1520 Oak Smithville Highway, the road, is designated the Harold G. Glenn County Highway Building. And Section 2, the appropriate sign design designating the building as Harold Glenn County Road, Highway Building, be placed on the building by the Warren County Superintendent of Roads. So, it move.
Now, the motion is second. Second by Commissioner Wayne Colton. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Item 3 is the confirmation of the new Codes and Environmental Department Director, which, according to Tennessee Code, annotated 5-6-106-C, the county mayor appoints members of county boards, committees, and appoints department heads. And we had, I think it was six people apply, all six of them, to the policy and personnel. They went through and looked at all six, and they all agreed that Richard R. Thompson, who I am presenting to be our new codes director, they all agreed that he should be the one selected. His licenses that he has is a fire inspector, ICC Fire Inspector. He's ICC Commercial and Residential Building Inspector. He's ICC Residential and Commercial Electrical and Plumbing Inspector. He's ICC Residential and Commercial Mechanical Inspector. He's a Tennessee State Certified Fire Inspector, a Tennessee State Certified Building Inspector, a Tennessee State Certified Plumbing Inspector, and a Tennessee State Certified Mechanical Inspector, plus, which will help us, he's also an EMT, which would be great to have up here. So, it would, the chairman would entertain a motion to approve Rich Thompson. Motion by Commissioner Boyd, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bond. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Rich, would you stand up? Wayne's back there. And so, that's your new codes, department enforcer and inspector.
I appreciate the force of serving the county.
Thank you. Okay, now, to item 38, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number 31-2015. A resolution authorizing the use of Warren County funds to supplement the cost of the expansion of the Warren County Memorial Highway, Memorial Airport, and to authorize and further supplement previous authorization of the county to initiate condemnation litigation. Whereas the Warren County Memorial Airport Commission and/or Warren County, Tennessee, are in the process of expanding the Warren County Memorial Airport, and Warren, and Warren County, Tennessee previously has passed Resolution Number 162015, whereas it is the desire of the Warren County Commission to supplement the authorization previously granted. And whereas, the Warren County Memorial Airport Commission has a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division, which apportions a 90% share of airport expansion and development to be paid by the Tennessee Department of Transportation, and a 10% share of the airport expansion and development to be paid out of the Warren County General Fund. And whereas, the Warren County Memorial Airport Commission and/or Warren County, Tennessee, are ready to file a petition in the circuit court for Warren County, Tennessee, and begin the eminent domain litigation, and whereas pursuant to contract, the Warren County Memorial Airports and/or Warren County, Tennessee's portion of this project cost is 10%, of which the sum of $9,500, and whereas the particular parcel of real estate to be taken will be put to public use for servicing the airport expansion, and further that this particular parcel of real property is necessary for the expansion of the airport, and the expansion of the airport is estimated to bring additional revenue for the airport in the Warren County, Tennessee. And whereas, the real property to be taken is a parcel of real property of approximately 6.16 acres, more or less, being bounded on one side by the new airport road, and whereas the county needs authorization to file the condemnation lawsuit on behalf of the Warren County Memorial Airport and/or Warren County, Tennessee. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on this 21st day of September 2015, as follows. Section 1, that the county executive has been previously authorized to remit funds in an amount not to exceed $9,500, which sum represents 10% of the estimated airport expansion and development project cost, including but not limited to imminent domain proceedings and later developments, and this resolution does not increase nor limit that previously granted authority. Section 2, that the county is hereby authorized to initiate legal proceedings of the condemnation on behalf of the Warren County Memorial Airport Commission and/or Warren County, Tennessee. And Section 3, that the expansion of the Warren County Memorial Airport is for the greater public benefit, and the condemnation of the above described real property is necessary for the expansion of the Warren County Memorial Airport. Section 4, this resolution shall take effect and after its passage, the welfare of the county requiring it denied some of the...
I have a motion, there's a second. Second by Commissioner Prager. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I got to have one on the call. Please call the round man first.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Boland.
Yes.
Carl E. Boland.
Yes.
Kenny Boyd.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Colton.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prager.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
No.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
No.
Melissa Yancey.
Yes.
Any one want to change their vote? There are two yeses.
Yeah, motion passes, 22 of the two. Okay, item four, this is appointments to the Financial Management Committee, and I'll go over, I think, but you should look over this. You got it in your packet, but I'll go over a few of the most important things here. This law, committee is composed of the county executive, superintendent of highways, director of schools, then four additional members elected that are elected and appointed by the county commission. Some of the things, this is a one-year term, which will expire in September 2016, with reappointments to be made. We will accept nominations only from the county commissioners. You must obtain a second for each nomination. And commissioners may, at separate times, nominate more than one person. If you're nominating a person, that person has to be willing to serve. We have got to receive at least a minimum of four nominations, but we will accept all nominations, they're unlimited, but after which your motion to cease nominations may be accepted. And if all commissioners nominated, they may vote for themselves. And each commissioner, now, keep up with this, you get four yes or no votes. You get four yes or no votes. The other way, you just pass it. Is it no? Is it yes? Okay, I'm sorry. Just four yes votes. So, you vote. And what we will do, we will alternate, we will start with Commissioner Bell. The second time we start, we'll start down with Commissioner Yancey. Then we'll start back with Commissioner Bell, then Commissioner Yancey. And then, the four nominees receiving, wait a second, receiving the top number of votes will be appointed to the committees. Yes, Gary.
Would you tell everyone the restrictions?
Come to that.
Okay.
Okay, and all, this committee meets at 3:30 to keep from having to pay comp time or whatever, because Ms. Cantrell and Ms. Hills are always at these meetings. Okay, this is a, this is a, in section 2.1, Financial Management, in the booklet, any person appointed to serve as a member of the Financial Management Committee may not have any member of his or her immediate family employed by Warren County. And what we mean by immediate family member is defined as spouse, child, grandchild, parent, sibling, grandparent, stepchild, stepparent, stepbrother, stepsister, parents-in-law, son, daughter-in-law, brother, sister-in-law. So, anybody got any questions there? And any person appointed to serve as a member of the Financial Management Committee may not be employed by Warren County during his or her service on the committee, with the exception of Warren County Commission. And any person appointed to serve as a member of the Financial Management Committee may not be contracted by Warren County during his or her service on the committee. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've been on this committee for several years. I just, I hadn't been to a meeting in too much, you know yourself, and I'd like to, I don't want to be nominated, and I won't accept, because I just can't make the 3:30.
Thank you, Commissioner Colton. Okay, the floor is now open for nominations. Chairman, Commissioner Bell.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Scott Ridley.
I have a sister-in-law that works part-time for the school system. I don't know if that will eliminate the...
That'll be after that, maybe.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Commissioner...
I'm nominating three men.
Thank you, Commissioner. That was Dave Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ken Martin. Okay, Terry Bell. Okay, floor is now open.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Tommy Savage.
Commissioner Tommy Savage has been nominated second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Michael Martin. Floor is now open. Commissioner Carl D. Boland.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Billy Earl Jones.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Roberts. Floor is now open. Need one more for chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll nominate Gary Prager.
Got a motion, Commissioner Prager, is a second. To make, second by Charlie E. Boland. Floor is now open for another nomination.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we close the nominations at this hour.
The nomination ceases. Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Wright. You all draft?
Second.
Okay. Second, okay. Well, all four of you...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you've got a name that's teaching, can you still serve?
No.
Or is that so? Excellent.
Is that type you are, dear? Well, there's a chance. Yes. But we've got a motion and a second to cease. Is that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Give us a little time to get these in after best order, and we'll get started. Okay, we're ready to start the call, go over the, so, Terry Bell.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Boland.
Yes.
Carl E. Boland.
Yes.
Kenny Boyd.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Colton.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Billy Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin. Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Frager.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Alyssa Yancy.
Yes.
Any one want to change their vote?
Motion passes, 24th of the table. Okay, call the road, Commissioner Billy Earl Jones, please.
Alyssa Yancy.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Gary Frager.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Gary Frager, I'm sorry, Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Wayne Coglan.
Yes.
Harley Brown.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Any one want to change their vote?
Motion passes, 24th of the table. Next is, Commissioner Tommy Savage, please call the road.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Harley Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Coglan.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Billy Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Frager.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Alyssa Yancy.
Yes.
Any one want to change their vote?
Motion passes, 24th of the table. Next is, Commissioner Tommy Savage, please call the road.
Alyssa Yancy.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Gary Frager.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Wayne Coglan.
Yes.
Harley Brown.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Any one want to change their vote?
Thank you, Lisa. Four new members are Terry Bell, Commissioner Jones, Billy Earl Jones, Jerry Frager, Commissioner Tommy Savage. We'll now move on to item five. Please, the members, county clerk, Lisa Scott.
This is the list, moving over. Sheila Iola, Myra, Maria A, Valderra, Charlotte McRiver, Ann Terry, Mia Brown, Marcy Swett, Barrett Rock, Faith Dick, Judy Mars, Brenda Lee, David Boyd Ramsey, Bobby G. Taylor, Beth Martin, Melanie Spencer, Wilma J. Gooch, and Cindy King.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Morris Bond, second. By Randy England. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Under announcements, I should already have this, but all commissioners are invited to attend the grand opening and luncheon at BN Plastics on Wednesday, September 23rd at 9:00.